So, welcome to the Hexham Town Council on 11th of July. So first of all, council will ask council to hear questions from Hexham residents regarding matters on the agenda of Hexham. Before we do that, we will just give an update on questions asked recently. So first of all, Truist in the Seal, they've told residents that the many trees in the sea only have about fifteen years of life left. NCC, sorry, not only can the council contact with the PA, the trees and woodland officer is liaising with the green spaces officer about planting as part of the management plan. So that's done. The pant, hello residents, asking me for an update on this being cleaned. So that's still with councillor Suzanne Fairlaken. Unfortunately, she's not here, but assuming to give an update. Wentworth car park, the new car park, there has been a petition issued by a local resident, and that is how they drove a process, and that will be seen by the county council. But also the council's plan for to move the white bays, which are the old day parking, from Wentworth, and they will now be at the new bunker site. And those white bay car parks based in Wentworth will be all converted to medium stay. So Wentworth will consist of a significant amount of medium stay, four hour bays, and two hour bays to the current size, and then a full time base at the bunker site, pending any adjustments as the seat fit. Cemetery greenhouse.
She's going to plant something over your throat.
Right, so I hope that's okay. So questions? So I'll turn around and ask residents some questions. Your name and please add a penalty.
When you reach. Can I make a plea for pedestrians in this town, for people who walk around on foot? Everybody who shops goes around on foot, we're all pedestrians at some point. Can I make a plea for mobility scooter users, for wheelchair users? There are four schemes currently that Highways has produced, one for Hencoats, one for Cattermarket Priestwater, one for the high school, and that's three. They haven't produced anything for the marketplace, but that's another one they need to. And none of them are any help to pedestrians at all. They're not widening the pavements, the crossing on Hencoats is merely dropped curves, no indication for drivers that that's a crossing point. The proposal that the high school, which Mary Anne will know, is not going to help kids walking to school, one iota. And obviously, Mary Anne taking wheelchair users out of the back legs of school, that she knows a lot of the problems of wheelchair users up at her school. And as for the eight hundredth anniversary of that marketplace, which if I counted the trip accidents in the marketplace, walking around shopping, would probably amount to at least fifty, it's an absolute disgrace for pedestrians who have to have eyes in the back of their head to negotiate that safely with traffic run through, especially on farmers market days. But can I ask that the town council please support Hexham Civic Society, who are going to try and get some improvements in what the current designs are for Hencoats and the designs that are for Battle Hill and Bruce Water? Because they're no good for people on foot.
Right, we're looking forward to any questions of all very powerful, very quiet, and we're looking forward to Hexham's exciting today's report.
If what we design is, it will be pointing to be aggressive.
You might be sure that someone I submitted with the admission address, but what I was wondering is, when things are brought up this meeting from residents of the town, the new sort of resolve appear, but ones that aren't resolved, where do you find the information? Where they go to if they go to the council? Which meeting do they go to? So instead of bothering you every meeting, you could access the website and see what meetings you refer.
Well, we will take G A P to give that answer, give you a response, you know, to give you a focus on.
Listen, you sort of.
Well, I think we're right, because we should be sure that every question asked, obviously can't ask all of them, is even, is having a really friendly answer, you know, sort of comments and stuff, anything that we could get.
Should we do some communication with the council problem, then probably the next meeting, that you would give a progress report?
Okay, apologies for our sins.
Councilors Fairlaken, Sessford and O'Farrell.
Any declarations of their requests, anyone? Right, so we're now going to agree the minutes of town council held on thirteen June. So we'll do accuracy first. So that's pages two, three, four, five, six, seven and eight. Oh, seven, sorry, seven, sorry, seven, seven, I got sent that. Right, is there any items anybody wishes to raise in those pages? Is progress? Okay. Right, let's get on next. So we're now going to receive a presentation from our Hexham Twin Town Associations. So Mary Anne, Kathy, are you going to provide us with the presentation?
Okay, so hello everyone. Thank you for inviting us to present information on our Hexham Town Town Association. My name's Cathy Booth, and I've been a committee member for seven years now. This is Mary Anne, my friend and colleague, Mary Ann Fordham, who was recently elected as our chair of the association. So just to set the scene a little bit, when you enter Hexham today, you're greeted by the sign, welcome to Hexham, twinned with Noion and Metzingen. And these signs represent a history of international cooperation and friendship, some at an official level, and many with informal links between people of all ages and backgrounds. Twinning, just for a bit of history, became very popular in Great Britain after the Second World War, with the aim of building links and exchanges between individual towns and cities to sort of bring reconciliation and prosperity after years of conflict, Dresden and Coventry being more of them. We're now going to present information on our history, aims, current activities and future plans with you, and discuss ways in which we can work closely with the council to facilitate wider engagement in our visits and activities. So Mary Anne is going to tell you a little bit about the history and aims of our association.
Okay, I'm going to try not to say Hextingdon, because I said that earlier today, and I just can't say that again. So super briefly, I just wanted to say that the history of the town twinning between these three towns is that Metzingen and Noion were twinned in nineteen seventy nine. So they've got a bit more history than with us. But we twinned with Metzingen in nineteen ninety, and then we twinned with Noion in nineteen ninety two. So this year, we're excited because it's thirty years that we've been together with Noion, and we're heading there in August. So that's exciting. So there's more detail if you like the finer detail of the history. I've got a nice little sheet with the finer points and how that all happened. But that's kind of the years that have been included in the twinning. But we wanted to tell you as well, I'll just refresh you about our aims and objectives as an association that we have. And it is to work, the first one is to work proactively with Hexham Town Council, to promote and foster the international friendship and understanding, and particularly in relation to Hexham's twin towns, Metzingen and Noion. So that is kind of our priorities, to work with the town council to promote that. We want to encourage visits by individuals and groups from the twin towns, and especially we want to encourage them for young people. We also want to broaden the mutual understanding of cultural, recreational, educational and commercial activities in our twin towns. So those are our aims and objectives, and they're all in our constitution. I have a hard copy of you tonight, if anybody would like to have a look at that. But I thought we could email one to you, Jane, and then you might be able to, if anybody wants to see it, we can email. So Hexham Town Council's role in town twinning is to sustain and nurture Hexham's civil links with its twin towns. And so we are really wanting to help you to do that. And so our hearts are for that, yours and ours hopefully. So that's great. We've got at least one person on our committee who is a town council representative, and that's Lee, and he's been just an excellent link for us. But we're very open to more people coming on board and just more involvement generally from yourselves and all the people that you know, because you guys know a lot of people. So we would love to have more involvement just generally on our committee and in the activities that we do. But Cathy now is going to tell you a bit about the activities that we're involved with up till now, and then we'll speak a bit later in a minute.
So just to highlight a few of the activities that we support really as an association. Usually, we have visits to and from our twin towns. Many of you have been involved in some of those. We alternate those visits, so that one year we'll travel to Metzingen or Noion, and the next year we'll host visitors from that town. So we're usually going to Metzingen or Noion one year, and we're hosting the visitors the other year. So we're going probably every year to either one of them. Recently, obviously, we've not been able to travel to our twin towns due to Covid restrictions, but we are excited, as Mary Anne said, to announce this summer we are travelling to Noion at the end of August, especially since it's our thirtieth anniversary, that would be great to see them. And we hope to host several Metzingen visitors at the end of September, which will probably lead with the Hexham Abbey Festival. We supported visits from, in the past, from Hexham Village Band, Hexham Churches Together, many groups of Kiwi High School students. We facilitated an art competition between students in all three towns, I think that was judged by the mayors in respective towns. And in two thousand and fourteen, we supported the Voices and Choices exhibition, which many of you may have seen in the abbey here, which has also travelled to our twin towns and were exhibited there too, to commemorate the Great War and the centenary of the Great War. The Hexham Quakers led that, but with lots of input from our association to facilitate information for that exhibition. We've taken, we've even taken over a football team in the past. So hopefully, that's something we can do again. So for more details on our events, there are many more, our website, which you'll get a link to later, shows a lot of those things and administrates them nicely. The association has facilitated participation from Metzingen and Noion in our annual remembrance commemoration, too. In two thousand and fourteen, a very poignant symbol of peace and reconciliation, your council invited Dr Ulrich Fiedler, mayor of Metzingen, to stand shoulder to shoulder with our then mayor, Terry Robson, to lay tributes on behalf of our respective towns. And it's also hoped this year that a few words of peace and reconciliation will be received from both the Noion and Metzingen mayors for inclusion in Derek Kennedy's address this year. So in addition, there are plans to organise a parallel peace walk with our twin towns in November around that weekend, in light of conflicts around the world, including the current situation in Ukraine, with support from yourselves as councillors and local quakers. And we're hoping that might end in a live streamed event, or if that's not possible from an IT perspective, with shared photographs in all three towns. The association and its members have maintained regular contact with our fellow committee members and friends via Zoom calls during the pandemic. And in addition, we have local conversation groups and online Zoom sessions, which help us learn, maintain and revise our French and German language skills. But I just want to be clear here that we do not, we do not need to be an expert in either language, or even speak either language, to be able to visit our twin towns. We've got lots of sort of mutual friends who are very good English speakers, and it's amazing what you can get through with gesture as well. You don't have to host in return either if you want to visit one of our twin towns. But we obviously hope that people want to build on their new friendships that they make when they visit there. Participation is up to all, and we really want to get wider participation from all areas of Hexham in our future visits. So we're going to tell you more about those exciting plans later. And we also organise a range of local social fundraising events, because it costs quite a bit of money to host people when they come. And we also like to subsidise travel for young people to go to Metzingen or Noion too. So we're going to hopefully, if the IT works, show you a brief clip to further introduce you to our beautiful twin towns and the range of activities on offer.
Okay, so that hopefully gives you a flavour of what it means to work. That gives you a really good flavour of what, you know, we're about as an association. And some of those pictures there, just give you a sense of what's been happening. But we wanted just to remind you that, you know, we're so grateful, because the council gives us an annual grant every year that helps to support us when we are hosting visitors here. And we wanted to sort of say to you tonight that, you know, we really value that. But what we'd really value as well is just, again, sort of your increased participation rate and help with this whole kind of remit that we have, because we want to move forward in a slightly fresh and new way. We're sort of in this brilliant time of reset post pandemic, and we have been thinking about how we can do things to include more people generally, and get people involved in town twinning. You know, we don't want it to be just one coach load sort of every other year. We don't want that. We want to be doing loads more. And we've had a chance as a new committee, we've only had one meeting, but it's becoming really clear that we've all got a sense that we want to kind of hit a refresh button in a way, and do things slightly differently. On a practical note, as a committee, yes, we're quite new, and we've actually lost some really sort of longstanding members of the committee who've served their time, if you like. And one of the things we've got, we've got a void that we need to fill, and that's the treasurer. We really do need a treasurer to help us move forward. And we wanted to tell you that tonight, because maybe one of you, or perhaps somebody that you might know, could come on board with us and help us in that. We've got, yeah, some exciting new ideas. One of the things that's become really clear is that we just want to raise the profile of town twinning. And we want it to include perhaps more visits and more to and froing, just generally. And we think that the way to do that is to think about sort of focused interest groups, and think about getting people on board. So for example, there was an amazing day of singing a couple of weeks ago. Hexham Community Choir was twenty years old a couple of weeks ago, and had an incredible day of singing in the town. There was a concert in the Queen's Hall, fantastic day. And we were thinking, that could have been an opportunity to say to Noion, to say to Metzingen, have you got any singers? Would you like to come and join us? Send a contingent over and we'll host them for a day of singing in a weekend in the town here. And likewise, we'd love to be able to take interest groups, maybe like, I don't know, anybody really interested in film, or gardening, or crafting, or whatever it is. But maybe start to think about smaller groups going more often perhaps, to then augment that bigger trip that we do in our sort of more traditional way. So we're beginning to think about how can we, how can we sort of galvanise smaller groups that are more focused? That's kind of our sort of new thinking as we move forward with the town. And we'd love to just be engaging with the wider community in Hexham, with different groups from different backgrounds, and just be as inclusive as we can. We don't want it to just be on Remembrance Day that we talk about Noion. You know, we've got some signs in the market square to Noion and Metzingen, but we'd love it to be more about people coming and going, and really trying to include as many people in town as possible. So we're excited. I hope you can sense that we're excited about this and sort of moving forward. But what we'd love as well is kind of to just collaborate more closely with you as a town council, and have your ideas as well, so that we can sort of move forward together with this really exciting sort of long established links that we have. We'd love to just, yeah, do that a bit more, and then we can reach out to these other towns. And it's when you're reaching out that you get stuff back. And, you know, that's what makes us excited, because we've got such great friendships that have come so quickly, and it's so easily really, from just having gone over there and met people. So we'd love to share it with more people. But we do need, I think, just more help, and we definitely need a treasurer, I hope. So if you could help us with that, that would be fantastic as a committee. But thank you so much for having us to speak to you. And it's a big year for us, because we're sort of hitting the ground running with our Noion trip in August, and then we've got Metzingen coming in September. So we'd love to gift you a leaflet for your fridges, to keep us at the forefront of your minds, and think about how, if you've got any ideas, or if you know a group that could be just the, just so ripe and ready to go, or to maybe think about liaison with one of the towns, please tell us. Lee is on the committee already, but again, that's open to all of you as well. So I hope, I hope we've done enough, just to refresh your members of town twinning. And we're excited that Derek's coming on the coach to Noion this summer. But yeah, we want it to be an exciting future with more happening, with more people in the town, just generally. So have a think for us, and if you have ideas, please be in touch with us.
Okay, we'll go for questions.
Thanks.
First of all, when I moved to Hexham, twelve, thirteen years ago, I was excited that there is a town twinning in Hexham. It's so important to keep the communication and the relationships going with other countries, because we're all the same, and we all have similar interests and needs. And to have two town twins with us is amazing, I think. And we're doing great work. So thank you very much for coming here tonight. Many of you know that I'm from a German background myself, so, you know, I'm a product of town twinning in a sense. So I know the value of it. You've asked for committee members and treasures. I can't really say much about that. I mean, all of us do about at least three or four committees of ourselves.
Yeah, you might know.
But the fact that we've got Hexham TV here, and we're hoping to get the word out there, now we know your needs, we can pass that on to other people in our social media, maybe, Jane, I don't know. But what I'm really interested in is, I've been thinking about this a while, but I haven't, you know, I haven't had a job. But for example, I'm involved in climate action here for the town council, the climate champion, John and Mike, and the rest of the council. We do a climate fair in October, the next one. I'd quite like to know what Metzingen and Noion is doing, because they will have solutions to things that we're still thinking about maybe. Likewise, with how we are welcoming the Ukrainian refugees at the moment, they may have ideas that we haven't thought of, and it would be good to liaise with them. So again, I think certainly from those two points of view, I could benefit a lot from speaking to people over there as well. And I speak the languages, so I'm fine with that. Not very good at writing in French. So yeah, if I have the stuff, and if we can link up, that'd be great.
Penny?
Yes, that was very interesting. And I was really interested in the way that we're talking about opportunities where we can link up, because particularly this year, there are lots and lots and lots of events, the eight hundred years in the marketplace, all sorts of things, that it would be really interesting to have, you know, people from another place, another country participating in, and some will lend themselves a nod. But I went to Noion with the village band, and a big discussion of our cultural exchange that never came to anything. But I still think that there is room to that. And like, we went as musicians, but I'm a fine artist as well. And I always thought it would be really interesting to have, do that through the three towns where you do a residency in a different, in a different town to the one that you've originated from. So that's just an idea really, because I think that the cultural exchange is really, really important, and it focuses quite easily on place and food and traditions. But there's quite a lot more that we can share. So I think it'd be interesting to have that conversation, especially if you could apply for a grant to do that. So thank you for your presentation.
Any more questions?
Thank you for coming tonight. I've been on the town for seven or eight years, and it's the first time anybody's spoken in depth about town twinning. And there's a lot of misconceptions. It could be some of my own. That town twinning was a little bit, for those in the know, it was inaccessible, and it related to a particular social class that was in the know. So I'm delighted that some of those myths have been dispelled. I take Penny's point completely. What I would look for, and people that work in the sports world. Um, what I would look for and people that are working the sports world, uh, sport and young people is, is something that, that's an easy hit.
Yeah.
Um, we have schools now going to Australia in different parts of, of, of the world. That would be very easy or easier.
Yeah.
To, to organise for young people and families and culturally. And the music that Penny's touched upon there in Emmaun, even if it was once every two, three years where we would go there or they would come with, uh, but something specific that people can hang that on. A lot of kids have never been abroad. There's a misconception by everybody that everybody thinks we're pop, uh, city and the kids go all over the world. A lot of the children in, in Hexham have never been abroad and this would be an opportunity that wouldn't have been given to them otherwise.
Hmm.
Um, so I'd like to see you perhaps work it with some leaning time, obviously, uh, with, with sports clubs, but particularly we've got fantastic, well, fantastic schools in the area and it, it was from one of the school teachers that they intimated to me that they were welcome trips abroad from schools and, and there's, there's that comfort in a school organising it rather than individuals who, who may have other things. But welcome, uh, you know, your presentation was good, it was informative and it's given us all something to think about. Thank you.
We're excited because, um, I'm, I work at QEHS. So having taken on slightly nervously this chair role, I thought to myself, right, I'm going to get in there. So I told the modern Foreign Languages Department that they're now staring at the new chair and I've, you know, I've had some really good discussions already. And we were playing petonk at QEHS two weeks ago in, in, on another hot afternoon it was, but we found a, a place in the space that's perfect. And so some sixth form, French and German students were, sorry, it's, it's underarm, you can't do that, it's that way. So we've started some petonk with a view that I'm thinking teen t-shirts, let's get a group that can go and play. It would be fantastic. So this, you, we've started something and, uh, the A level students particularly, I've got the teacher, she said, come, come and talk to us in an A level lesson. So I feel like we can get, that's obviously in the secondary school, but again, you know, there's, um, we could be going younger and I think we, we're both thinking, Cathy and I, and, and the committee, we are really wanting to work it in August when we go because, you know, those ideas and those people that we can speak to, I think we're going to have a very long list of, you know, kind of things and people that we want to try and create, you know, some links, some fresh links to think, okay, well, how can we, how can we discuss this? How can we think about what you're doing climate wise in Noyon? It'd be so interesting. So we are going to have quite a big agenda, I think, because we need to seek out the people that are there in the town that are kind of going to make a move and shake there that we can talk to.
Well, I came into town twinning very much from trying to support young people because I came in because my daughter was a student rec which was sixteen, seventeen at the Kew, Kew, Mansburg High School on the committee. And I got involved because I could see how beneficial it was to her and her friends to be able to make those links and to travel and to, to, to help their language skills and everything else that's out in, and to build those friendships.
Yeah.
Um, and I think, you know, I've always been there trying to start saying we need to get wider engagement. It may be that we need your support to actually access some of these streams of funding that are out there that we don't know about because it would be great to be able to get the pot of money that we could actually help stu- stu- young people and children that aren't able to go from a financial perspective and really support them to say, we can pay all your trip to go over there. We can support you, we can provide you with, you know, secure sort of accommodation, we can check it out, know you're going to be staying with families that are going to be really receptive. It'd be a really good experience for you to go and just meet, don't need to speak French or German, which is really good to go and see what it's like to live in Germany. You learn so much.
So they, they will bring you, Lee's our, our liaison on the town twinning.
Yeah, thanks for that. Uh, the video was amazing. Uh, go back to Penny's Steve's point, I mean, these are both things that we're working on in terms of, you know, how can we make town twinning a thread with our cultural activities and also poverty proofing so that these kind of activities aren't just a sort of, you know, domain of middle class people. You know, we have to make sure that we're including low income families as well. Um, I just wondered though on a practical level, um, you know, given that we currently have a government, I do stress currently, um, that seems really determined, sort of, you know, terrorist wholesale from the fabric of, of your socially and economically, um, sort of what the ramifications of that have been for you organising the trip to Noyon in terms of, you know, you talk about more reciprocal visits, given that we're now limited in terms of how much time we can spend, um, in EU countries, um, given the rise in cost of insurance, mobile phone roaming charges. Just whether any of these things have come into your planning and the information that you've had to give out to people who might want to do it?
We certainly have and particularly as well with the extra Covid restrictions and different countries and keeping an eye on the ball of what changes in terms of regulations for entry to different countries. Um, and I think, yes, there are, there are restrictions on what you can take into the EU. You've got to make sure that your passport is stamped on exit from the EU to make sure that you know that you've only been there for a couple of weeks. And because it's not stamped where you come, when you're trying to get back in, they might think, well, you've been here for ninety days and a hundred and eighty, which is, you're allowed ninety days and a hundred and eighty if you're a British resident to stay, to stay in the EU and after that, we're not allowed until the next twenty, eighty day cycle. So there are things like that and additional costs, as you say, roaming charges, insurance, fuel is going up. So, you know, to, to travel to Metzingen, we usually have to fly, uh, because of the distance, it's about, um, twenty miles south of Stuttgart. Um, there are direct flights from Newcastle. I have taken a direct flight from Edinburgh before now, but usually it's been a two flight fire ship or Heathrow. Um, with all the sort of logistics that you've heard at the moment going on, that's not something that's, you know, we're still waiting to hear what our Metzingen visitors are going to do about coming here. But I think we need to subsidise certainly a proportion of people going, um, if we're going to facilitate this wider engagement, we're going to have to look at different funding streams that we can access, Lee, really. I'm really excited about the portal that we're trying to, do you extend it more about the portal because that's something that helps.
It's been the long term project, this, but so quickly, we're sort of looking at, during lockdown, we found out about a town in Poland that's twinning with a town in Lithuania and, um, because of the sort of, you know, isolation that people were feeling, they set up a, a two-way portal where there was a view over each town's main street or marketplace and they could literally go out, seat them and wave at each other through this portal. And it seemed like quite a nice and tangible way of linking up. Um, so we're sort of exploring, you know, what that might look like, what it would cost, what the IT implications would be, sort of a medium to long term project that we're looking at, whether it's in the Queen's Hall or in the marketplace, whatever, or it's sort of, it's in the pipeline anyway.
I mean, there are screens that have used before, like before of showing the outside cinema, um, or, you know, there are different screens people have used for, for showing big events. So it's whether we can capitalise on that.
Um, right, thank you for that then. So I'll, I'll just wrap it up. Um, we can go back to that, so, um, the presentation, um, you know, was really energetic, you know, electronically and, and human. Um, you know, a lot of energy there, um, quite interesting, but I can see here what comes of all sensations in, well, having that town twinning here for, for that length of time, that's just remarkable. We, we need, we need to address that. Um, and hopefully, you know, if you are as energised as you are and you've got more plans, you know, I'll certainly make sure we look at it, you know, seeing you again maybe next, next year, you know, seeing you on a annual basis. But we do fund you, we do, we say, actually, you know, we give you the funding, we like to see the, the response to that and everybody wins, you know, because we, you get plastic etcetera. So, so, so certainly think, um, Jane, for the book, um, town twinning as a, one of our annual, um, you know, presentations, I, I think that would be a good idea. Um, I, I, I used to be Lee, um, back in two thousand and five, I think, I think it was when I was here, when I was the, I was on the town twinning, I was talking about the three or two thousand, whatever it was. Um, uh, and I, I went to, to Noyon, um, and I thought it was a fabulous town, I was really, really impressed, very, very similar to Hexham. Um, and, and it's just layout and everything else, but, um, certainly some of the memories I had was, was, uh, obviously it was on the front lane in World War One and, you know, seeing the cathedral there, which is bigger than all abbey, but, you know, dominated town, so that to Hexham and seeing that pop mark with, um, you know, still with the, the shell marks, you know, and it, and it just leaves that last, and let's see if, you know, like, correctly that, 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 that just leaves a lasting memory and it's just, it just puts a sugar down, down your back, actually, when you see that. Um, but it's, it's, it's a beautiful place, um, uh, realise people, um, in, full of history, uh, if you're into, in the history, which, which I certainly am. Um, so that's been good. Um, so you mentioned, um, the Metzen delegation is coming in September, when, or do you know the date of that?
I think it's about the twenty sixth, it's, it's the Friday. The twenty something, yeah. It's to co- it's to coincide with the abbey festival.
So, so, so the twenty fourth is a Saturday.
Is it right?
Will it be there?
It's to be the Friday before that.
Before that. Yeah, yeah. So woo-hoo, because, because, because we say what time it is in for, um, all eight hundred years of Hexham market. So obviously it's eight hundred years of, of Hexham market, it's not a marketplace, but actually the market itself, you get its, uh, sign of approval. And obviously we want to do, mark those eight hundred years, you know, with, with the big event. So, um, one of the first things we've done, and this is importantly, presented officially, um, you know, we had a, has a presentation, um, uh, the other day where we asked a student to come up with a, a design. So we went to high school, said, uh, students come up with their, with the, with a design and, uh, and Belle Burden came up with this fabulous design, uh, which represents the shape of the abbey at the top there, um, and the N B in the market. So you get the H and the N, the Hexham market, um, you've got the colours of the Humberland, you've got the twelve twenty-two and the eight hundred years. So it was that fabulous, so, so we've had these fill up and you'll start seeing these in the old window, maybe if you walk around the town, you'll see them in the old window. But I, I am having some, some very terse conversation with them. Let's see, I hope they're going to be constructive conversation with the county council, I don't know, but there we go. Um, but these are, well, we, we, we will be taking one of these to France as a gift and also we'll be giving one to the Germans also as a gift. And if they're coming on the twinning, I've got this, this event going on the twenty-fourth.
Perfect.
It's all titled.
Nice.
Do you see it? It's, it's quiescent as well.
Yeah, that's good.
So that's great. So, um, you'll have, we'll have to put them on our invite to me list. Um, um, so I, so I think I've, I've moved into Mayor's announcements here, so, um, so that was, that was one of the Mayor's announcements was, 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 was that. Um, I've also got, um.
Can we go round to the post?
Yes. Um, we've also got these, um, these stickers that are going around with the town where we're asking the businesses, uh, to, to put them on the windows whether they like it or not, whether you're in the country or not. But, um, we're asking, you know, so we've got these stickers that are going on each of the, the business, we're asking the businesses to put these in their windows and it's just to, to really, it's like their contribution, their link, you know, link posters, is a, is a community, is a town together, you know, that we all will celebrate this, these eight hundred years, you know, so, so they should stop seeing these being put in, uh, in some of the businesses' windows or, so that's all. So just get that, that brand going from that. Um, right, so I'm going to Mayor's announcements. Um, you may leave if you, if you wish to leave.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So, um, I just tied that, I thought, I thought it was a nice tie in with the, with the, with the Hexham market. Okay. First thing I'd like to, um, to, to bring your, your attention is, uh, Mr Ben Sanderson here. Uh, Mr Ben Sanderson is, uh, with experience. So do you want to say a few words, help you through this people?
Will you use half of it?
Half of it. Help you through half of it.
Must be interesting, yeah, I'm enjoying it. And, uh, just see what kind of cheese you put on the council on. I'm very curious.
Yeah, and you're from the high school?
Uh, yeah, I go to Kew.
Yeah. Get a year of the Hexham?
Uh, I'll, I think, N Y.
Y, yeah, good, 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 good. So, um, so Ben's only been with, with us for a week, uh, and, um, and he just learned all about how town council functions and operates and what our objective is of Hexham. So good, so I hope you had a enjoyable time then. Right, uh, announcements. So, um, we stopped the ban stand sessions, so that went very successfully. Um, uh, so we've had three now. Um, I'm going to bring Penny in later, I'm going to urge the matters about, about ban stand sessions because I was a bit of a confident, uh, but they've started. Um, so our host hosted the first one, there's about two hundred people there. Um, Suzanne Thelysakin hosted the second one, that was again, so two hundred was that, so that was two's number, so Penny, Penny Brennan hosted the third one. Um, oh, I said, did I know? Four, four, not four, it was all four, four now. So we're seeking to get around the two, two hundred mark, uh, whether it's been very, very pleasant to us, so, you know, it's all going well. So just keep spreading the word of that, that's good. Um, uh, so we opened the Travelodge, uh, along with, so councillor Paul, councillor Cester, join me and there was also people there, Steve wasn't, I've talked about that one. So sixty-nine bedrooms, they've said straight away that, uh, from day one it's been full. Um, they're, they are really impressed, uh, with the demand that's out there. Um, uh, we, we had, we had a tour, really, really nice travel, travel lodge. Um, there is a huge demand out there. Um, they will fit in nicely into this town. Um, I don't think they'll make any damage to all that businesses because, um, you know, all that competing businesses with, with regards to breakfast or, or hoteliers because that is such a big demand there, so they will fit in there nicely. One thing they did say to me, I mean, they had very senior officers there, um, who were really interesting to talk to and they said, one thing that they've done through their assessments is that for every pound spent in a travel lodge, two pounds extra goes into the local community in spend. So they said, so, so we asked them, we said, well, how much? It was like forty pounds a bedroom, so, so basically for, for one night, so eighty pounds is spent, you know, and you're, and that's sixty-nine bedrooms and they say that whole phone. So you're kind of thinking like, oh, that's, that's, that's a, that's a lot of energy going in, into the, the local economy that wasn't there before. So really, really impressive. Um, they also sent quite a big delegation and a lot of them hadn't even heard of it to never mind, um, you know, been here before, they were just standard, or, or pretty talented and what matters to them. So, so that was all, all impressive. Um, uh, we, we had the Marcus Hall on Saturday in our, our lower grade, again, sunny day and it's going, going great, getting lots of positive, um, messages from people, you know, they like that the Marcus Hall's there, so they can just drop in and, you know, have a conversation, um, with us. Um, you know, we, we keep a record of, of what the issues are, so we've, we've got that and we'll look to, to address them. Um, attended an anti-litter, uh, campaign, uh, with Suzanne Thelysakin. Um, this was run by the QE, Q, QE High School, but it was really raining all the feeder schools in the, in the, in the Tindale area, uh, around about eleven years old and they'd have brought them all together, split them all up in, in, in their pockets and on their tables and then, and then they all had a like talk about litter, um, sustainability and all, all, all the things around that waste and everything else. And, oh, it was just honestly, it was, you, you just like bottled energy from, from all those kids, it was just, just wonderful, honestly, it was so good. And it was a whole day event, um, really, really interesting. Um, then, you know, we've got the goal of the champions there, they were now going to go back to their schools and, and really champion the cause. They got, oh, you know, like litter turned into waste, it turned into sustainability and all, and all the things that led to that, so, so that was a fabulous day. Um, the, 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 the next one, I attended, um, a tea tour, which was, uh, I couldn't spend a lot of time there, but, uh, this, spent, this was something ran by, um, well, sponsored by waiters that was injured, um, as, um, um, on force of personnel, uh, and it was just going around, it was doing some charity work and, and you, you could have, you could have a drop in the table and speaking to some forces, people, and it was to break try and break forces, people who were in the area, they had been travelling all around the country, they, they did a drop in at the waiters, at, at Hexham, um, you know, there's some, uh, parallel stories and knock on us here. Um, but it was nice that I was doing those types of things. And the, so I had some excellent little things to do in this, this, but the one, the most, the most interesting and the most left field one was a, was a, an equator tonight from many years ago contacted us, he, he used to work for the English Football League and he's. was a, was a, an acquaintance of mine from many years ago, contacted us, he used to work for the English Football League, and he still has got relationships with the money back sender to all the different clubs, and he has a relationship with Southern A F C. And Southern A F C do this outreach, and they've been taking these kids who are fifteen, sixteen, taken to the sill on Adrian's Wall, where they spend a week there, and then they have time just out, so they're walking the wall, coming into Hexham, being given other tasks to do. And of course, none of them have ever been to Hexham before, you know, like. And we, and they asked me to go and say, we're going to do this debate, and someone did that, and I said, we're going to do this thing called Ask the Mayor. I said, all right. So we did it as a conversation, supposed to be a question and answer, so we did it as a conversation, but there were seventy kids there, and the messages they gave to us about what they thought of this area was astonishing. They were talking, saying that, you know, none of them had ever been to Hexham before, just couldn't believe what a fabulous place it was, couldn't believe, you know, I stopped talking about the history, I'm going to do this eight hundred event. They were absolutely blown away by like how green and pleasant, you know, the ball is, coming into Hexham, like having just a little town where you walk around and just enjoy the place. And one of the girls says, she says, how come Hexham is so clean, pleasant, green, and happy with graffiti? And I know we kick ourselves a lot, they don't have that sort of, and this has happened, but, you know, like, these were fresh eyes seeing the town, and we thought, wow, what a, what a message to take. Other people were saying, like, they had to go and talk to other people, and ask them questions about the town as part of our national citizenship. You know, just saying, what a pleasant, what a dear people Hexham was, you know, to talk to, that everybody would talk, and nobody would dismiss them, would consider everybody was warm and welcome to them. So it was an amazing, amazing day, a really, really, after a strong week already. And I've got seven months to do in a couple of weeks' time, I think. Still doing a similar thing with another group of children from Surghul, but really interesting. And so they came for a, they had a wonderful chat, and it was just very interesting, that, you know, what they thought and that vision of this area was just, was just astounding by. And I was one, one of my sixes, he says, I'm going to go home now, I'm going to tell you, tell you mom and dad, I'm going to come here, bring them to Hexham, show them the slide after the parade. That's, that's, it really was. Right, so that's my, my messages. And I was going to pass over to Mike, who was to just do just a little conversation about school competition.
Yeah, thanks, Derek. So along the lines of the town council private emergency and County Council's carbon neutral target for twenty thirty, we're launching school competition, so I think the young person's theme is quite clear tonight, especially with Ben here. So children of age five to eleven now, in twenty thirty will be twelve to eighteen in two years. And really, we're just looking to get their input, young person's input into how they would see twenty thirty, and how we would travel, how we would heat our homes, how we would reduce our waste, our renewable energy, and the use of the carbon footprint service. So the whole thing is just really tricky to give to their input, because I don't know what, I don't know what that age group is thinking. So we're asking them to produce a poster for short sixty-second video, it's for the opening this week. And the competition will end on the first of October, where we'll announce the winners. And then the second stage is a two-stage process, on the first of October, it involves the counter-counter carbon footprint survey. So we'll be some articles in the press in the community chamber, all the job of posting some of the posters out, you know, just to let everyone know.
Brilliant, excellent, well done. Good, right, so the next item is to present number eight, bringing the council off the payment, so we're looking at page nine, ten, eleven, well. Good, all right. Right, the next item is item nine, which is to adopt a community engagement policy. So the policy is here on pages thirteen through sixteen, yeah? And so I just invited anybody to have a comment.
Just comment, this isn't being to the Community Engagement Committee, which I find a bit strange, considering it's about community engagement. Can I just ask if we bring it to the Community Engagement Committee, just to discuss in maybe a bit more detail?
So that's a good question. So there was a reason why, comment, that's a good question. One thing where, and I did discuss this with the community engagement chair, we're wishing to put an application in for this council to be called Quality Award. The Quality Award. Currently, we've got the foundation, which was achieved the last few years, and we want to achieve the next of the Quality Award. Now, it's all Jane's fault, this, okay? So because, because Jane is retiring, so because Jane is retiring, and we, and if we push this through the community engagement, we'll just take that bit of time, and it won't be here until this whole council, again, till September, which would be, we think this is a key plank to make in that application. And it was really just to gain time. So the proper process would have normally been through community engagement, doing the work there, bring it here. But obviously, all of us, the town council, or the full council, made that decision. So we're trying to do it through expediency only. Policies are there to be reviewed, or so, so if they pull back in several months' time, or if actually we're going to change it, amend it, or that type of thing, but that was a way to file, we were suggesting, come here, it's just for expediency, so Jane can stop that application prior to leaving. I hope that is a satisfactory answer.
Yeah, I just got my points.
Yeah, of course.
It's a little, very, I understand that. But if it's about quality assurance, it's about doing the right thing, and it, forgive me, Jane, it's not necessarily to coincide with Jane's retirement. If you're doing things the right thing, it must go back to the Community Engagement Committee and come back. That's just my, I understand the argument for it not, but if we're seeking that, that's what we should do.
Yeah, probably, and I do, well, it's been, I agree with you, but I think everyone's got the opportunity anyway to make comments on it. So by taking it to the community engagement, you're not, you're just extending the whole process, but people still have the opportunity without that part of the process? Like, anybody can object to anything or add anything now?
Well, all I'm worried about is that sets a precedent, that, you know, the main deadlines, that are ambiguous. I understand completely, you're right, and that's just one of my concerns, that this is what we have submitted so far, it's quality assurance, it's a bit short-sighted to cover all that.
Anybody, so Alison, you wanted to say something actually about the content, didn't you?
Yeah, yeah, so my thinking of the actual content of it, there's one sort of blaring, I think, missing, which is the business of community engagement. So my request would be that if we are moving forward on this tonight, that we could add business as part of the community. There's two sections at the beginning where it's included. I'm not sure whether this is particularly relevant for the policy as it stands, but we had discussed having some guidelines for social media, our social media, how and when we post, and what needs to be included. I don't know whether that needs to be included at this point, or maybe later, but that would be another consideration for me.
Yeah, so that would be the social media policy, but we can, we can actually public point managers, yeah? Yeah, and do a cross-reference, say that we have a social media policy. So we could work that in to get, say, that is a social media policy. Is that, does it mention the word business, businesses in there?
Yeah, but not in that, not in that first, that was first to tell us, it's like key objective, hasn't it?
So would you like to, so some explicit comment or?
No, just actual words, it's just, the business is to be included as part of the community.
Now, would you want to, this also puts a commercial as well? Because businesses are quite abroad.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll just, just add a sentence.
Is there anyone else who's got anything?
Well, just a few comments. On point three, it talks about methods to ensure engagement will include, and it goes on to list quite a few, which is all pretty good. But one of them is word of mouth, which I just think is not really necessary within the document. It's not something we can go around and tell everyone about. Point three was.
All right, yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry, yeah, yeah, okay. Frank, yeah, but I mean, I mean, just to remove that.
Also, I think also point three, but halfway down, it mentions about the town council will operate a gateway service to its office to ensure local people are referred to the correct organisations. I just would like to add in there, town council will, where appropriate, because I don't think, I don't know, I just wanted to make sure it's we absent on a wild goose chase for something that isn't relevant to the town council. And also on point four, item four, four, we've mentioned about considering holding consultations and surveys where necessary and appropriate, and to make results available. However, we talked about in the last full council meeting, there was a survey of, I forget how many people, fourteen, fifteen people, and that was not available. It wasn't really representative of the town. So if we're going to make it available, I think we need to, before we make it available, we need to consider the size of the survey, and also the representativeness of the survey as well.
So if you had a, a teagiality or something like that, would that be?
Well, yeah, I guess that might be.
Well, those are all possible, it's not, I think that's a really important. Yes, yeah, just, have you finished, Tom?
Yeah, I'm finished.
Yeah, just on that, on point three, to the first point.
Number seven, which, which, which?
On page fourteen. We've got three of the H C towns on community engagement there. And just on that last, the point that was made about communication by word of mouth, I'd like to have that included, because I speak to quite a lot of people, and inform them about things I'm going to make, because they don't pick up all the social cues or all the press, and most of the time, they just don't know. So, you know, that's quite useful for me and for a lot of other people in this room, so I'd like that included.
Yeah, can I just second that, actually, I'm just thinking about the store.
Yeah.
So much information gets passed off the store, so I didn't know about that.
We've got it now about collaboration with key partners for the school.
Well, it's more informal than that, though, it's just, it's not, it's not collaboration exactly, it's just somebody comes up to you on the store and asks you a question.
Yeah, I understand that word of mouth will be used, but I don't think it should be defined as a method for the town council to go about communicating to the public.
Well, it's sort of, because we, I mean, we were talking about this.
We're saying we're staying in the stores, I think, you know.
Yeah, we were talking about this on Saturday, and I think one issue we have with the various things is that despite what I said, it's, people don't know what's going on. However, many posters you put up, how many, how many things you post on Facebook, that's not fair, I'm sure, but people came up to us at the picnic, came up to me at the picnic, and said, oh, they just basically happened to be walking on Fourth Street, and that was the first they knew of it. So the word of mouth, I think, is really important, and I think it's a way of engaging people that actually are difficult to engage with, often.
Fair, Mike, is there a better expression than word of mouth?
That's what it is, yeah.
You know, even temporary, you could argue it was word of mouth.
Doing some of the human, just human contact as well.
What's wrong, I don't really understand this.
You must find that innovative legislation, or either town's word of mouth, there's a better, must be a better way of describing it, that would incorporate all the things that you're saying.
Face-to-face interaction, yeah.
That might be better, Mike.
All right, are you all right for that?
Yeah.
Good, right, okay, we'll do that, please, please. Is there anything else?
Has the new notice board been mentioned in here, I couldn't find it.
Sorry, what's that?
The new notice board that we're putting up, that's another one.
Yeah, I saw it on there.
It's in, I couldn't see it.
It's in the first one, always. On that, sorry. Just on that note, I was wondering whether, I don't know whether it should go in here or somewhere. If there's a definite day for adding information to both boards possibly, so that people know, you know, there's people that are hard to reach, otherwise, they know that every Monday, for instance, a new notice will be put up on the boards, so if they want to know what's going on for a week, they can actually go on Monday, or Tuesday, or whatever day.
So would it be just that same weekly? Would it be, because it was a bad one, and all that type of thing?
Yeah, or Tuesday, where it's market day, traditionally where more people may be in Hexham. I just think people need to know a day, and when they're all used up on that. Maybe I'm.
Yeah, I would agree, I would suggest we don't get tied down, just in case, I might be urgent, urgent, to be just saying it's updated weekly, because I imagine we do that.
It's at all, I mean, it does, I know, it's a place, it's very long. I guess it's so that people know where to go, isn't it, to see.
Do they, do they just go regularly in then, or time uses?
Maybe because of the, I think, it's just these people that were coming up saying, they know the picnic, which was all. If they knew where to know the things, other people come to the stall, and they're standing there looking, that's, you know, great, that they're looking at the bestest. But they have all the phones, although they don't have access to internet, they don't have a phone with them, that they can take the photo of the list. If they know one of those is always going to be in that.
And the responsibility for doing that, who goes as that?
Jane.
It's the town clerk?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, as I say, you know, this has gone a different way because of circumstance, that's important. And just so we get our application, because Jane's been working probably, like, all the work that Jane's done over the years, what has all led herself to this application, or this quality standard? As a result, it's just, it's just training a bit in together, into a single package, or like, this is a quality standard. I think if we do it before Jane goes, then obviously a new clerk will appoint soon. It would, you know, it would be a lot for them to try and take in, probably we talked about several months before we got her.
Can I just propose then, because most persons approached me about it, I mean, I was like, I was a little bit unsure about it, I probably called it, because, you know, I was sticking up for, you know, for the process, follow it, then it's four through three, so I would propose that maybe if we approve it today, that we specify a meeting of the Community Engagement Committee where it is brought to.
Yeah, yeah.
So that we can.
All the policy policies will come up at any time.
Possibly September, Community Engagement Committee, that's out of luck, I think.
Good, so with those amenities that have been mentioned, can we vote on this, to see if we agree? That, that, thank you, I'd like to feel involved, it's really important. Good, to get around. I want you to, right, right, so. Right, ten, to resolve that the council complies with criteria for local council levels to be quality of all safe closed. So this is, as I say, that was a key point to go in, that's what, that's what the board was probably missing. That's what, that's what the court was probably missing out of having posted as the town council, as the town council taking all the boxes. So page seventeen, eighteen, nineteen and twenty has, uh, an explanation of what this award scheme is. For the very best local councils, by a frame of support for local councils and meeting their potential. So we, we currently got, we currently have foundation, but we're the only ones in local movement. They've only got a little bit, so this is why it's really important, this, maybe I'll just do the next bit. Really important that we are the only ones, so the council before us is the only one who have that foundation level, so, so we are pretty impressive. The, 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 the step that we want to go to next is, is the quality of all, um, um. And as you can see, this is what it's all about, it's about, you know, about effect, you know, about delivering effectively, effectively for their communities. That, that has documentation, that has information in place to, to operate hopefully in the courts and all the rules and stuff. It's also about us demonstrating that we, we, we achieve good practice in governance, community engagement, in counselling. And obviously, we've put an awful lot of effort in, in community engagement in this last year, in all the other stores, and all the other things that have gone on, the social media is, is, has rocketed, as in the engagement on that. Um, so it's about going, going beyond legal obligations, just not just doing the bare minimum, this is about us adding the value and leading everyone, we're continuously seeking to, you know, our communities to improve, to achieve that award. So this is, this is not easy, um, this is, this is a high bar, um, as you can see, as, as a thing where it's only a group of fans. But this would be a good test for us to say, do we achieve this? And if we don't, we will, you know, we will get feedback saying we need to do this, we need to do that. So it is a good way of actually challenging ourselves to say, actually, if, if, if there is a thing that I'm missing, they will actually tell us and say, actually, you need to do this and this. So, um.
Could measures, Mr. Mayor, if the role passes it, uh?
And, 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 is it national, is it nationals, national association of local councils, so it actually goes away for assessment by that. I know, yeah. Um, so really, the question is, do you, do you want, do you think we're ready, do you, do you want to go for it?
Yeah, just ask, ask a question. Um, I know the person who used to run now, is also, is retiring as well, isn't he?
That's the Northumberland.
Oh, okay.
So that's just the Northumberland, or, or, yeah, so, so, so we go through the Northumberland to, to, to the, to the.
Yeah. What's the timeframe, like, when will we get an answer, do you know, or?
There isn't one. It took a year for the foundation to want to be sorted. Um, but that was partly because Northumberland lost the original email for some time, um, and a few bits and pieces that needed to be tweaked. I think this is ready, but I don't know how long we will take. I'd like to get it in as soon as possible, uh, but it may not be, it may not be feedback before I move.
Yeah, I think we should go for it, because like you say, if we don't succeed, we'll know what areas need to be looked at, so we can construct a address.
Is there one in here? Okay, great, excellent. Here, uh, eleven, to agree that council's top three highways transport priorities for the local transport plan, twenty-two, twenty-three, here we go again. Right, is there, um, any, any suggestions of what our transport plans could be got across from us to include?
Uh, three priorities last year was for twenty mile per hour speed limit throughout Hexham. The county council's response was that the current extent of that speed limit is appropriate and I know current plans to extend it. The second one was to close the marketplace to traffic on market days. The county council's response was this will be considered and discussed with market staff, closures for the farmers' market already in place. And the third one related to a lollipop person to be employed at the Wetstone Bridge and Dale Road, so the New School Side Junction. Um, and the response was this cannot be funded via the local transport plan programme. However, the request has been passed to both safety officers for consideration.
Right, so, hey.
I think that number one and two should stand, because those are priorities and they haven't been addressed. And I don't understand the response about closed for market days, because my experience is that it's not closed traffic, it's on market days. So could you read out what their response was, please?
So close the marketplace to traffic on market days, this will be considered and discussed with market staff, closures for the farmers' market already in place.
So, so remember the Little Bitch, please, of course.
Oh, the Little Bitch?
Uh.
Ah, so we need to be clear about what they're, they're talking about, because they need to be about the area they're talking about. Okay, so, uh, you've spoken for us, number two.
Thank you.
Um, just, uh, some of the discussions that we've had, um, quite, um, being up to this. So, uh, in terms of discussions, the three that we talked about, uh, that was talked about were, one, um, that we talked about twenty miles per hour for the town, um, and it looks like it's easy, just ignore this, um, for the last three. That was one. Uh, second one, sort of ties in with the English Heritage, um, um, piece of work that's happening across the Ashtray, they're having a new paving and raised lamps in from Priest Popple. But it would be good to have, um, some ramps on Beaumont Street, at Benson's Statue, at Cruse Hall, the marketplace and the Market Street Community Centre. Having stood there on Saturday, talked to people, you can see what the council are doing about slowed down traffic. And then the third item, I think, would be, um, active travel considerations around the marketplace and through the roads. Um, it's a buzzy area again, standing there, and it would be good to look at how we could, um, um, make that be grateful for the outskirts and people that want to access it. Is that really my thought?
Can I just read it for us, I believe it's not English Heritage, it's historic, is it?
Okay.
But I think it's important, it's the, it's good.
Yeah, just to, again, back to the store, but every single time, it's just endless, the people are like posting notes about the fact that they've nearly got run over, or they're chucked, they can't get their buggy. You know, you've got one part of the market, one side of the road, and the other part of the other side, and it's absolutely ridiculous. It must impact on those market stalls to, uh, not in the actual marketplace. Because the, the queues of traffic, it's just constant traffic that comes across there. And you can see people, actually, you can see people trying to cross the road and just turning around going, because particularly if they've got dogs and babies and, you know. So I think that's so important.
So Matt, can I just ask a, a point of information? You, you sounded exacerbated at the point.
No.
I, I, I share that, because we put forward the, the new bit part to each one as well. Quite legitimate and, and low cost of it. How many of these ever get approved, uh, as come out? Or is it just a process of engaging us and telling us?
Yeah, I, 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 I mean, I, 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 through many years, I just, people entirely disbelieve me by this whole state of affairs and that, and that. But, you know, the coolness every year, we're all like, what would you like? And, and, you know, for example, the twenty mile an hour round, round the whole town, half the town is twenty mile an hour already. And all it's saying is that you've got twenty mile an hour, you've got thirty mile an hour, and then you've got some part of ten, ten, ten mile an hour. So it's, it's just confusing for drivers, why can't we have twenty mile an hour? That is not asking for the moment, is it, really? That is just, that is a reasonable ask. It's not, it's not expensive, because you're just changing signs from twenties to thirties and, you know, yeah, oh, yeah, we'll take it, even the time to do it, and all that type of stuff. But it, it's not as if we're asking for a flying over or a ramp, or hard infrastructure. It is very, very cheap to do a very significant thing, and, and they just get, like, the traffic doesn't want to do it. Uh, and, and that, that, I, I just, I just think it's over. So, so, so if I was, if I, if I was, if I was treating it, treating it, um, you'll have seen, you'll have seen in the press about this Cala report. And, and really, one of the things that Cala reports trying to get under the skin of is that you've got officers and you've got councillors. Now, I do not believe that any of the leading councillors in the little hum that can be counted are saying officers stop, stop Hexham from getting twenty mile an hour. I just don't, you know, I don't think the, 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 the Ben Sanders, I don't think it's John Riddle that runs highways. I think it's highways that go, wedding to the book of highways in goal. That's the rules that follow the highways, and I've tried everything persuasive to say, oh, in Scotland, they are introducing twenty mile an hour in every single town very soon. They say that is the right thing to do for the whole of their nation. Wales are looking into that as well. If you go, if you go, you know, we've only talked about France and stuff. If you've ever driven in, like, no, certainly the towns I've driven in, both in France, all of it's, if you ever go in the towns, it's thirty kilometres, that's just twenty mile an hour, you know. So it, 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 it's, it's not the law, it's, it's not, you know, God hasn't written this down on a tablet or stone, it is up to councillors. And I, and I think it, I think this is a real challenge between councillors, all fourteen of us agreed to this last year. The three county councillors went, went to the county council, said the same thing. All the councillors were actually entirely, kind of supported us as well. And then you just hit that brick wall of like, entranced by the high, high, highs. And, 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 and I, I, I think we should have this as number one, on the basis that let's have a vote then again, and say, look, you must find the political will, the democracy of this town and its councillors, because you think the book is more important?
But didn't Cambridge get it? Last year?
I think they got bitter there, yeah.
So they've got twenty.
Yeah, can I, can I, can I add to that? Because I, I think that the way that we challenge it is also, it's about neglecting our democratic processes, or just ignoring them really. But I think that the more evidence that we can have that they're out of step with other places, the better it is. So I agree with you about the twenty miles an hour, there's obviously lots of occupants there. In terms of road closures, which is something that really doubts us, because we're trying to close the road for, in massive events, and they're set to go to four thousand two hundred pounds, or whatever it is. I'm wondering, um, Jane, if it's possible for you to do a bit of research on what other county councils charge for road closures? Because if this is just a random sign that the county council's made up, which is huge and therefore actively deterrent, we would discover that other county councils, councils who are equally believed financially are charging fifty p. Then we need to cite that. We've got to, we've got to challenge and evidence, challenge and evidence, and say, why are we so different? What is different? Keep calling it out on the basis of argument and evidence.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a fair, fair point. So, so, John?
I've got a suggestion that actually might not cost anything. Uh, and that is, uh, that the county council, uh, highways department to consort with us to actually say, we have this idea of doing some work in Henochs, for instance, and it's going to create massive changes to the, um, to the way the traffic's routed around the town. Um, what do you think of that? And to actually ask us, and to say, and that might have given us the opportunity to say, well, we can see that the roads in the poor state are need repair. But have you thought about widening the footpath? Have you thought about putting in a cycle there? Have you thought about just asking the people in the town for their opinion on this? And I would like, not to find out about such work from Facebook, which is how I'm going to do it. I'd like to be consulted as a councillor, as a town councillor.
Mr. Mayor, on that point, of course, the, you know, fellow town councillors admit, they've been fine. The highways, we've invited all the people that we support, we're talking about the democratic process, and I, I, I'm nodding my way through with you. These are part of the democratic process, they're not, you know, autonomous bodies. Couldn't we ask them to come to discuss some of the issues in Hexham? Now, we, uh, uh, that's fairly liberal in the sense that we haven't come with a pre-impact planning agenda. My view might be different to everybody else's, but at least they're able to explain their view, and, you know, uh, other members of the public have, have, have talked about, uh, the pedestrianisation or, or the view of pedestrians and all. It'd be very useful to get, uh, you know, collection of ideas and see what their response would be.
I think, I think that's an excellent idea. But, but I mean, the, the, what I, what I would just add to that is if we want to do that is, is if we have several bullet points that we want them to discuss with us, you know, so it's, it's also a structured debate, you know, right, we want to talk about. For example, you know, we want to ask, we're asking for twenty mile an hour across the town. Can we, can we discuss that, you know, can we talk about how the marketplace, what future the marketplace is, you know, and how it operates and active travel and all this type of stuff, you know. Give them several bullets and say, right, this is, this is the lead of the questions we're going to ask you. Can you come and, let's have a, 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 I've had a really good idea.
We've been prepared in the next twelve months.
Yeah, yeah.
Quite often, we are now, we're going to accept the same stuff.
Absolutely, we've got a really good plan, so I, I've been really careful.
And, and one of those bullet points, also, I think, I think this is really important, because we're beginning to trouble the council lot, is that we ask them how communication between us can be improved. Because there is a gulf into which things are dropping, and it's becoming more and more, I think, exacerbated the separation between the county council and the town council. And I have no idea, as a town councillor, what the county council regards as its duty is in terms of our, of the relationship between the two of us. I understand what we try to do with the county council, that we lobby, that we influence, that we talk to our county councillors, that we have responsibilities that, that, that we execute, and I think we execute them very well. But that is not a two-way process from where I'm standing. And, and, I mean, quite often, we could be doing some of the county council's work for them, because we're here on the ground. But there seems to be a sort of gulf or a gap, and I, and I don't, I don't attribute it to disregard, I might be wrong. But basically, they don't, I don't recognise the value of that relationship in the way that I think that they should do. And I have no idea in terms of the statutes or the processes or anything, what their responsibilities are in terms of communicating with us.
No, that's a, that's an excellent question.
And I don't know where we found that out, don't forget the heavy communications in, and said, what's the process? But we, we need to start a good conversation, because we are the big long round that we've been complaining to about the fact that it's in the coran that Henochs has been closed. And we, we look like idiots following everything else, because we've not been informed about something that's happened on the ground. And that has just happened to the best of us, you know, and it's not, it's not acceptable, really, I think.
Yeah, that's, that's, it's, it's good points, it's good points. So, um, so I'll, I'll, I'll throw some things, is there any more debate? Any more ideas? Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll throw some, some things up. So we've been asked for three. Um, I have actually spoke with the, um, the councillor who was ahead of this process before, uh, councillor John Riddle, and I don't blame him for this, by any stretch of the imagination. I, I think it's, it's as much deeper than, than the councillor is, um, you know, saying, look, you know, I, I have totally no faith in this, this, this process that has been asked, asked for three things, because, because I've, I've just never seen anything from others. Um, and he's, and he was going in the area, so then he was going to have a think about, about stuff. Um, but we're here again this year, which I'm really surprised, because I thought, I thought they were going to have a think about doing something else, but they've come again. Um, so I think, I think we should, I think we need to dig in on the twenty mile an hour and say, look, this is our demographic. They agree, they, we did this last year, we want it, we have not changed our views, because, because if we, if we, if we don't do this, they, they won't, haven't they? You know, they, they just go, say, oh, you say, look, you just say, look, they're to town council, and they just go, somebody else, and just say, well, that, and, and, and it's just a constant process. We, we have to make it stand here, go like, oh, this is, this is what needs to happen. Because it's, it's, it's a simple, it's a cheap thing to do in, in, in these open halls, so I think we should, should go keep that one. So I'll ask, are we in favour of doing that? Right, okay, so we're, we're in favour, okay. Right, the next one, which is what Mike highlighted, was about having raised, so, so we know when we spoke with the heritage action zone, that they're going to, they're going to, like, like, raise walkways on when, when people are crossing the road. And what Mike was highlighting was to say, it was similar down Beaumont Street, so I think that, that, that everything we suggested were the key crossing points, which is where Beaumont, the, the, sorry, the Benson's statue is, because that's the place where you come, you cross. because that's the place where you come, you cross over. And that's a very broad road that, you know, you have to go the area. So a raised area there, so that makes it easier to walk over and slows cars down. The second one, which is the one that always allows me, is the one, the Queen's Hall to the park, because the, the site right there, proper again, just some sort of raised area. And the third one was at the marketplace to the Abbey, was that?
Yeah, Abbey to the Marketplace.
Yeah, Abbey to the marketplace. And then the fourth one was the community centre, across the road from the community centre to the Bushon side, yeah. And the fourth one there, I know, I know, we've spoken about that before, I believe as well. So that is item two. Would everybody be in favour of that?
Yeah, can I just ask, is that what we used to call the secret police?
No, I think it's like, just like a, so, so the role is raised, so it's, yeah.
I think it's called courtesy crossing, isn't it?
They're called a?
Courtesy crossing?
Courtesy crossing.
Oh, that's so much nicer than bloody over police. There's so much of a laughter, isn't there?
Right, okay. Are, are we in favour of all those fours are even two?
Yeah.
And then third one, um, Mike was, the mention of active traveller regions around the marketplace and the square. So don't want them just to say that it's the market, I think that was really dismissing them just to say that it's closed on the market, because, yeah, yeah, they're right, they're running the same, they're running the same time. So some sort of active traveller range, which mostly includes those who walk and those who cycle to have priority in and around that area. Is that what we're seeing?
It's, it's just a thought. We're likely to get dismissed on, on these in reality. On the third one, just as a foot in the door, couldn't we actually ask as a priority that they come to this meeting?
Yeah.
And see what their response would be? And I think it would be very difficult for them to fob us off. Um, although it's really legitimate in, in, or three hours, it's, it's very difficult for them to say, no, we're not going to speak to you because that undermines their whole process of why we're looking the best for us.
So, so, so this, this is what, what we asked for as the plan. I, I, I think we should do that as well anyway, because it just is, is, is the covering message, but like, but this is our plan, so it's.
But I just think it forward to them to give us a response in the same way that they've given us negative, negativity. The previous three requests.
It's too easy for them to say.
Yeah, took it around the end of the new office, yeah.
Right, so, so there's a, there's a suggestion, what, what we want to do now?
Just get them to assume it's possible.
Yeah.
To all of that.
So those who have priorities, plus and minus, in the next meeting.
Right, good.
Sorry, I just had, um, Susan, Susan, uh, Ake, who's working while we're here to pass, pass a broken petition. And Ake, you know, I'm actually going to my school, so you see. I think we let you hang out.
Oh, was it Bob McCall?
Uh, Bob McCall. Thanks for your.
Yeah.
We buy it from what Steve said.
Yeah.
In my medical unit.
I, I, I think we're asking them, yeah.
Wasn't always in the picture, yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I love the high school, um. Right, okay. Well, I think that was a really good debate. I'm glad, I'm glad that take the really thick, oh, like, that's, that's really forward, uh, my, this, um. Right, um, item twelve, which is councillor Smith's proposal. Do you want to read it?
I'm sort of lost. Uh, right, yeah, this, this came from, um, when, well, largely when we had the, um, this, this, the talk from Hexham for Ukraine group, um, which councillor Betty's involved with. And I kind of felt like we ought to have some sort of recognition on, on Puntersley to show that the town council supports the work that that group, what, what anybody's doing to benefit the people who are coming over, seeking refuge in this, in this town and in this area. And I thought it might be difficult for councillor Betty to do that, as she's involved with the group. So just thought it would be nice as a sort of third party to, to make that proposal. Um, we've sort of between us discussed it and, and come up with, with this wording. Um, so the proposal is, forgive, forgive me. Hexham Town Council stands in solidarity with the people of Ukraine who have found themselves subjected to an unprovoked invasion. Refugees fleeing from the conflict are being welcomed into our town through a supportive network of local hosts and volunteers, including one of our town councillors, Ariana Batesy. The council would like to acknowledge this important work to offer sanctuary in our town to those in need. And the, the proposal is that that would go onto our website and be visible for anybody who, who looks on the website.
Okay, so, so, um, so there's a motion, so we need to second that. So somebody officially second that. So they are going to officially second that motion. Um, right, so we go into debate. Does anybody wish to debate this?
On the, I don't know, I'm not very disrespectful, I'd take your name now.
Yeah, fine, absolutely.
And do it as a, a complete thing, right, and we're following your lead. But that's not disrespectful to you at all.
Okay, content with that? Okay. And you've put out that as a purpose? Yeah, okay. So we just take out, so we take it out, include one of our town councillors, Ariana Batesy. So just remove that. Okay, anything else? Anybody else who's to debate? Okay, we'll move to the bottom. Okay, that. Okay, so you move to us. Um, right, two note, the, um, the E, the two, the twenty, the eight, the June. Okay, um, planning infrastructure, so the page twenty-one. Two, three. Oh, sorry, Jane.
I'd just make, make a comment. It's a bit an elephant in the room, the abstractions of minerals within, in the area. And John, it's something that you feel very passionate about, and I think we should have. Uh, it's difficult for county councils, I appreciate that, from, uh, the dual membership of various organisations. But I don't know anybody who's in favour of it, uh, at all, and it, it's just self-interest and, and, uh, greedy commercialism. But I, I'd, I'd welcome your input, John, uh, because you've been very passionate about this and what your views would be, and I'd like it to be, uh, something that comes out of the day that you would leave. I've not spoken to him about it before, John.
Okay, well, you're right, and I think it's, it's an issue that we all need to get involved with. And I think the, the town council has sent in an objection, hasn't it, John?
On behalf of the planning committee, yes.
So we've done that, but I think every individual sitting here, um, should object too. There is no need to have gravel extracted. There's a huge supply of gravel in, in this county anyway. Thompsons have said that it would be protecting jobs, I think they're only about four jobs. You protect four jobs at the cost of what could be an environmental disaster. I think in the past, people from N C C have said that it could be a serious splinterage which would damage the, the town at some point. And a lot of waste materials would quite easily be washed in to the town at some point. And, uh, Thompsons are promising us, um, the possibility in the future, maybe in twenty years' time, a lake and a place where you can build hides to watch the birds. And I think, with that promise upon one hand, and you think of the, the huge lorries which will be coming out of there on an already busy road, very, uh, is it very, very, very road, um, at the Egger junction. It's already far too busy for the road. And, um, you have, so you have the noise, the pollution, all of that. And it, it just doesn't stack up, it's not, it's not worth it. And maybe if Thompsons, the people who want to extract this gravel, maybe if they want to protect their jobs, of, of these four people, maybe they should be looking at different building materials which are sustainable. Maybe they should be looking at, how can they get into tapping the vast resources of Kiel de Forest or, or whatever? Um, wood is the sustainable building material of the future. And maybe they should be looking to that, rather than going back to the previous century's building materials. Do anybody have to say anything else to that?
My only view, as an add-on, I didn't want it to be lost in the subcommittee's minutes. And then when people ask the town council, uh, as a collective, what's your view on it? I, I think we, we're there to oppose it for the very reasons you, you've outlined there.
Can I just ask what the day, closing day is, John?
I have no idea.
No, it, it, sorry, excuse me, I was looking on my phone because I've just been contacted by them. So I can circulate what, in the lobbying group, I had it, so I can circulate that. Uh, I was just looking for it, um, if, if, if that's what county town councils would like to.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
If you are putting in a complaint about this, and I hope everyone will, um, you can also mention that the land where this gravel currently sits underneath is actually decent farmland. At the moment, we should be protecting that.
Oh, sorry, Tindra, but the email I got actually said that, um, a similar application has recently refused on the twenty-seventh of May by the Worcestershire Council. And he said, the minutes in, a long and worth reason, but actually, it's not up for my refutation.
Any thoughts about that?
Yeah.
Um, someone did come up to me on the store, you know, something, and just say, you were basically, but it was like, N C C already just to hold it through. And, and it did say, you'd be really here to get things moving in terms of, um, protesting against it. And making sure that, yeah, everybody does, I mean, for something individually. Do we need an emergency motion? For that part?
I think so, I think, I know, you know, even if it, if it's something like reaffirms its position, um, in opposition to the distractions.
It's raising the profile, but I think that's the problem at the moment, is so many people actually don't know about it.
Do we need to put that on our social media about re objecting in areas, the, um, the link to where you can object as well?
Yeah, but we need to establish that as a town council, we do, as to the emergency motion, it's just that we haven't alerted them yet. But we can't wait a month.
Yeah, we would have talked about it.
So, so it was, I'm just asking, asking Jane, well, well, obviously, the, um, the council's already written, um, an objection. So, well, we perform that duty, um.
But people don't know that. I think that's the problem, isn't it? You know, people don't know.
Is there any conflict there in us making public a rejection of climate, um, application when it hasn't been resolved?
No, uh, I mean, it's not in our parish, but obviously it's very close. We had asked to be consulted on, though it's not in our parish, but would, um, put in an objection anyway. Um, I don't know what the situation is as regards whether it's going to tide our lack or will be an office's decision. I know there have been a lot of objections, um. But the only, the only issue would be if you were on the county council planning committee and were directly involved in making an objection, you would then, I'm assuming then you wouldn't vote, yeah.
So, so I wonder if it's permissible today, because I don't want to wait a month for the next full count, about two, two for the next one. Whether we can, on an emergency motion, come up with a straightforward statement that we object. You know, that we support what the objections against this are. I mean, you brought it up, Steve, so.
Abs, abs, about that, you know, reaffirms its opposition to mineral extraction with, you know, like, on the middle, there, there's a policy there that people clearly understand, that the town council have discussed and opposed.
Which is.
Rather than wait for it.
Anything you can make of that?
Anything if we do it in general, so we don't even have to refer to the specific.
Yeah.
If that's an issue, refer to the specific planning application, but just in general, we are against any form of.
Mineral extraction.
Is that, amazing?
So, so Jane, do you just want to, so your suggestion is just, just to, so your suggestion is that, Jane, Jane's suggestion that the following happens, you, um, a motion is supposed to put through, we have to put it through. Um, what, what can do, because the town council's already made, it's, you know, already made that written thing. It, what, what Jane's suggesting is that we go, is that we write again and put out, uh, that rejection in again against the, um, application, saying that the town council has, the whole town council has discussed it further, following the P and R discussions and the letter, and we send a second letter just to say we reaffirm our opposition to, 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 to the extraction.
And can we put that on the website that we don't know?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I.
And it will be minutes of, so that's, yeah.
A minute, a minute, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'll tell you this one.
Yeah, yeah. Right, good. Um, so that was page twenty-two, so twenty-three, um, any more on the instruction? Uh, right, so next to item, um, is the, um, community engagement, uh, minutes on page twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. But twenty-two?
I'm twenty-seven.
Oh, sorry. Uh, right, so, and then the next, the next one, um, is community engagement on, um, the twenty-second June, page twenty-seven.
Um, yeah, so item, uh, three seven seven B, peace walk. It was noted, uh, that responses from Town Twin are still pending. If agreed, it was noted that this should be on the Saturday afternoon, twelfth of November. I think that's probably a bit close to the, um, Remembrance Day. Um, and, um, although I, I'm happy for the peace walk to go ahead, I think maybe a different day would be more appropriate. And I would suggest the twenty-first of September, which is actually International Peace Day. And I think it seems more, um, yeah, appropriate for me.
Later, it'll be the obvious version of it, so.
Nice. Um, yeah, I mean, we've got a meeting this week, there's something that I'm happy to go back and discuss. We, um, I think at the moment, there was a feeling that we want to have a reflection of the need for peace. Uh, that's why we wanted something explicit about peace at this year's events. Not designing in any way, shape or form to detract from Remembrance Sunday. That's why we, it probably should be on the Saturday. Um, I don't think there's anything massively controversial in the idea that we don't want, that we prefer not to actually have to have Remembrance Sunday, to prefer people not to have died in the first place. Um, and just that we would like to promote peace moving forward. I'm happy, though, to go back to the subcommittee and discuss the date. Um, because obviously a lot of it will depend on the between towns are available as well. Um, but just to reassert again, the idea that everything that we're doing on that subcommittee is to enhance Remembrance Day, we can, as much as possible, take into account the current state of affairs in the world. So that was where that came from really, and to include Town Twin as a little, little thread coming in through everything.
Hmm. So, so the, if I recall, I mean, I didn't see that, um, the eleventh of November is a public holiday in France.
Yeah.
Um, every year, obviously, not, not in UK, but in France.
Hmm.
Um, and they would, would have held, nine would have held a peaceful on that eleventh of November.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that, is that, is that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, that's the last picture, yeah.
So I think, I think, I think, Tom, I think, I, I did actually get, raise that point about, like, should that, should that be?
Hmm.
Another, another day, um, and I, I wasn't, I, I do love somebody passionate about that coming around. Um, but that, that was the, 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 that was the, where the debate went, was.
Okay, well, I, I, I still think, I strongly think that the, um, the twelfth would be too close to the Remembrance Day. Um, I think on a, on a day where you're remembering people that have fought and died, um, for our country, um, to then, um, go on a, a peace walk, although I, I completely, uh, understand the, the, um, peace walk and, and what it means, and no one really wants to go to war at all. Um, so I agree with that, but I, I do think it's probably a bit too close, um, to the eleventh.
Um, so, all right, and then Arianna, next to you.
Um, I wasn't at the meeting, sure, sorry, but I, I just, I think, isn't that the point? Having it close, unless I've missed something, because it's, it is that idea of, as you said before.
Is it disrespectful?
In an ideal world, nobody would have died, so it's, it's remembering people that have. But it's also, at a similar time, saying, let's, let's remember those people and let's report with that and use that as a way of hopefully bringing more peace and thinking that that is obviously the ideal situation, as it might be anyways. So I mean, it, to me, it makes sense to have them closer together rather than separately because it then becomes, maybe do it on the, the day of peace as well, possibly. But I, I think to have them apart, doesn't seem to work in my mind, it sort of seems, in my mind, should be together.
Yeah, and interestingly enough, in Germany, we can, we mentioned France, when Germany, the sixteenth of November is the date that is similar to Remembrance Day, so it ties in quite nicely, it's the same week, isn't it?
Which, which date is that?
It's the sixteenth of November, it's new.
Sixteenth of November.
Yeah. It's not called Remembrance Day, but it's the time when, when the churches remember the dead.
Wow.
And all of them.
Um, Jane?
Uh, I don't want it to be too controversial, but I'm, I'm not taking issue with anything anybody says. But the last thing we want is a discussion or an argument around peace day of all things. I can think of a council that springs to mind, who might, might have a different vibe of controversy. That surrounds that, but, you know, undermining what the actual principle is. So I'd, I'd support councillor Pearson's concept of it, that it's, it's put back. I mean, Remembrance Day is part of, for me, it's part of peace day, where somebody who opposed all the wars in Iraq and everything. It, it, it's, uh, that's the time, is war really necessary? We remember people who have fallen, look, you know, the, the nonsense of what, what war really is. Particularly when, you know, we look back on those wars and what, what they achieved. But I wouldn't want them too close together to avoid any controversy that might come out.
Late. Take it on board, I just don't think it's controversial, and I certainly don't think it's disrespectful. I don't understand how peace can ever be disrespectful. Um, it's what we're all striving for, isn't it? It's what we all want more than anything right now, especially. And I think this has to be presented in the context of what's going on right now, and the fact that there is a, the yearning out there for that to be reflected in some way. This seems to me to be quite a nice subtle way of incorporating that into what we're doing and not having it on a Sunday. And obviously, there's no implication that anybody has to be there or take part in it, you know, nobody has to be there. Um, so I don't think it's particularly controversial, and I don't think it will be, unless it's made controversial. And I certainly don't think it's disrespectful.
I just wanted to ask the question, eh? Um, I don't see it as being controversial or undermining Remembrance Day. But could you just give us an idea of who's going to take part in this, Mark, sure, please?
See, anybody can, um, so it would be open to anybody. And we are sort of exploring, exploring ways of involving the twin towns, whether that's online or, as they said earlier, sort of just us all, all three towns holding one and then sharing photos on our respective websites, something like that, but it would be open to anybody.
Do you foresee members of different churches, for instance, taking part?
Possibly, yeah. Um, I mean, Wendy Breach is in touch with various faith groups for Sunday, so it would be something that we would probably inform them about as well. But the invitation would be thrown open wide. It's very much in its infancy at the moment, I have to say, with our meeting this week. Um, we will be discussing it further, and I will feedback what's been discussed here as well, that's what, that's what it's for.
Great. Yeah, considering that we are twins with a German town and a French town, I, I, I think it's hugely potent, actually, I don't think that's in a bad way, I think that's in a really positive way in terms of that notion of town twinning. I think it's, I think it's a really amazing idea. And I wonder whether, I mean, I'm just making this up as I go, obviously. I wonder whether it came under the auspices of the town twinning, rather than the town council? Because the politicisation of the military, war, nationalism is really, you know, something that we can't ignore because it goes on all the time here, and, and I regret that very much. And, and I think that, that this has raised an interesting issue about what, what we want to achieve by it and what we want to take on, what discourse we want to open up, because it will be opened up. Whether we want to hold up round and say, well, this is about peace, actually, and it's things that are quite cute thing that, you know, do we want to be falling out about peace? How ironic is that? So I just wonder whether it may be better embraced by the town clinic with the support of the town council. And then it is an apolitical, unifying thing that comes on the, the brother of three countries that are experienced war at the same time with devastating experiences.
Right, conscious of town, there's three ministers, I'll go back and be able to get it, I, I saw, but I think, I mean, it, for, for the day, I think all the points have been raised, please, please capture all the wars and, and, and take that for Remembrance Day on, uh, committee, uh, papers. Right, um, uh, so that was twenty-seven, twenty-eight, um, um, page twenty-nine, so planning infrastructure, twenty-eighth June, page twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-four, and thirty-five. Right, um, correspondence, Jane?
Okay, uh, correspondence list is N A E News and C A M E News, Northumberland C B A Support Services, equalities and job just due vacancies, a funding equalities, Temple and Chapel Regulation Orders relating to Hencoats, West End Road Road, and for the three R H A Freedom Parade, uh, Hexham Space Foundation, Blue and Borders, N A K events, um, N C C Report on Storm Corrosion Test, Further Info from N C C Info, um, on the railway system in Hencoats in July and August, that's with Flagenburg, The Health Watch Northumberland Daniel Report, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, Love Parks Week, twenty twenty-two, A Local Resident Email Regarding the County Council's Webber's Former Homeless Site Park Proposal, N C C Info on those car parks, uh, and petition on those car parks, Tours of the New Middle School and U E H S site, Lindisfarne Gospels and Illuminated Sheep, The N C C Press Release on E V Chargers in the Wembley Car Park, and the Luthyman Town Parish Council Flag Change Toolkit.
Thank you very much. Um, so just, just, so many other plans, just, I, I'm gonna bring Penny in just in a second, but just, just to remind that, um, the, the, the Ollie, um, March in Hexham on Saturday. Um, um, oh, sorry, I still have. Well, yes, we are interviewing for our, our new club on Friday. And I want to bring Penny in as the only person to move.
Right, uh, thank you very much. So, um, some of you might know that, uh, there has been some vandalism at the banister stand. And it, um, I've been trying to unpick it because, uh, we found out about it at eleven o'clock on Saturday, and the banister session was happening at midday on Sunday. So somebody, it appears, has taken a heavy instrument, I suspect a slow hammer, to the cover of the electrics on the banister. And it's all co-owned off, um, anyway, I couldn't, I couldn't reach anyone because it was the weekend to find out what had happened. So today, I've spoken to the police and I've also spoken to the county council. And so they, the county council know, county council actually found that the vandalism had been done. And they know that it's, it's urgent that, uh, we have access to the electrics because we managed, despite this vandal's best efforts, to hold a really successful banister session, but we had to use a generator and it was quite, quite complicated and not ideal. Anyway, so we will be carrying on, I just wanted to let you know that somebody, somewhere, um, is, is a deliberate criminal act. Um, and we will report it to the police because the police don't know about it, although it's got police say, I'm in the banister. So I just wanted to do an update, but could I also ask, please, if, if I send Jane, or I send all of you, a PDF of the banister poster, that, that I've been sent a message saying that there's more posters for Slimming World up in the town than the banister station. That is not in any way to denigrate Slimming World, but I think, if, if every councillor could put up.